Workshop of the Council for November 6th, we have a full agenda, so we'll move right to our first item. Our chief is here for a discuss discussion of parking enforcement in fire lanes.
Thank you Mayor, Council. In your packet you have our documentation which basically just outlines our request to change the ordinance relating to fire lanes. In the ordinance we have agreements with business owners, private property, to do parking enforcement. However, when there's inclement weather, if it's snow covered, it's very difficult for us to be able to enforce parking lanes, uh, fire lanes rather. So, the NFPA has recommended language, and that's what we have proposed to include in the ordinance that would allow us to continue enforcement, even in inclement weather, and to ensure that businesses are putting the appropriate signage if they request us to do the enforcement. So, I can answer any questions.
How many businesses right now are we doing the enforcement for?
We probably are in the, around 20, 20, 25.
And did the, did you engage each of the businesses, or at least communicate with them about this proposed change, and if so, what was their feedback?
Most of them are in compliance already, there's a few of them that aren't, and so what we, what we're looking to do is, they're, they're willing to come into compliance, we just need to be able to enforce it that we're following those guidelines, so.
I'd, I'd like to, when this gets on the agenda, at least have included in the packet which businesses were doing that for.
Sure.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed in the language it talks about owners of private property, so it doesn't specify businesses.
Right.
So my concern there is, are you going to include somebody has a block party, somebody has a light display, somebody has a, something going on, and you're gonna force them to do this fire lane thing and, and force it? Well, I mean, it looks like anybody with private property is going to have, be under this ordinance.
Private property would be a business, and so that's, that's what we look to do. We wouldn't, we wouldn't enter into an agreement with a, a private resident to do enforcement at their home regarding a fire lane. So the, the, this is just for a business, NFPA regulations outline that the access into their building would meet certain requirements, that's what this is relating to. So it would not hit those.
I guess, what I, what I, like what I heard Andy say to clarify, this is only for private businesses that enter into an agreement for enforcement with the police department.
That's right.
So if you're a private business, if you don't have an agreement for enforcement, you don't have to meet this ordinance.
Okay, so it's pretty clear then, is it, I mean, I guess what I was concerned about that language is if it could maybe have something that talks about commercial as opposed to your basic private property owner, and then I didn't read it all, study it enough maybe because I didn't get the gist that it was a, it had to be the agreement first before this is enforced.
You look at the, the opening paragraph, it says that the chief of police may, may enter into an agreement with owners of private property, um, which members of the public are invited to attend, so that's a other piece too. It's not just a private residence where public are not welcome on that property, it's where, that's why I keep referring it to commercial or business, because they have, they have public that is accessing their building, so. And those would be the only agreements we would actually sign and go into with them.
Chief, could you just describe briefly the, the nature of the National Fire Protection Association? What kind of, what kind of organization is that? Is it governmental or private?
So it's, it's private, it's the, it's, yeah, it's an association, it's a private association.
Okay. So if we, if we adopt this language and kind of peg our, our regulation to a specific regulation of theirs, if they, if they update that, will we have to, will that trigger anything for us in terms of having to make, you know, keep our language updated as well in compliance with theirs?
Well, I think the way that we have a word is that they would follow their guidelines, and so their guidelines may change, it just means those, those changes would have to go, you know, we could then contact the businesses if there's changes, here are the new guidelines that they, that they have proposed.
Substantively, how do you think this, this language would change kind of current practices within the city?
You know, like I said, I think for, for many of the businesses, you know, they, when they are opening, they're already working with code, they're already setting up their handicap parking by the language of the code for, so that it's hitting those specifications. We just have some that have wanted to enter into agreement with us, and in our ordinance the only requirement is that we have the painting on the ground. And so, this would allow us to be able to say, we would be happy to do enforcement for you, here's the guidelines, you just need to be able to meet these requirements.
I think our fire code is already pinned to the NFPA anyway, and so if we made adjustments to a future iteration of the NFPA and adopted that, we could also adopt it with respect to this, if there were changes to the language. Um, I think I got the answer to this question, but I just want to make sure, the businesses that we've spoken to, who we already are in contracts with, did any of them raise any concerns about this?
No, those, they're already in compliance, we've had a couple that have asked us to do this that are, that are not, and so for us to sign the agreement, they could say, well, we'll just, we'll take a roller and just, you know, cover up the curb and say, here's our fire lane. Well, that just does not, just the way that it's set up, it would be difficult for us to enforce it.
Yep.
But if you go to any of the larger businesses, you know, we're in Walmart, we're at Hannaford, we're at Shaw's, those are our large businesses that we enforce, they already have the signage on the wall, or they have the signs on the curb, plus they have the markings.
Okay. Any other questions? So my question to staff, we have one meeting left, so is the recommendation of staff going to be to suspend the rules at the next meeting and have two readings on one night, or are we gonna pass this to the next council? It, it's a, it's a, it isn't something that has great controversy, so I, typically this, that's what you would do, so if, if you hadn't thought of that, I guess we can look at the council, if there is an opposition, we can just plan to have the language prepared to do that?
I would say if we're not gonna be prepared to suspend, suspend the rules, then workshopping this is gonna have to be redone with the new council, and so it makes sense, it is just a minor technical change in, in two words, really, so.
That's what we'll, that's what we'll plan for then. Yeah, go ahead.
The only concern I'd express about that is to ensure that any businesses that may be affected by this are informed that it's likely that we're gonna proceed by emergency, and it will be only one reading, so they're not anticipating an opportunity to come for a second reading and then don't show.
We'll have that list, with all the businesses.
This is something I want on my accomplish, accomplishments list.
Someone's building a legacy.
Next time I show up here, I can say, remember I was the mayor who got that ground marking done? All right, great, thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
We're ahead of schedule, this is great. Our next item is a presentation on streetlights with Mr. Belanger and guest, yours?
Derek, before you start, at the beginning, can you talk about the background to this a little bit and the process you went through to get to where we are today?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Council. As most of you are well aware, we've been looking at streetlights for several years now, and it's been discussed and at one point bonded. Unfortunately, there were several issues at the state level with, with the PUC, with CMP, that held this process up for a while. Finally, they've got those issues resolved, and several municipalities around the state are moving forward with the purchase of the municipal streetlights, and, and taking them over, converting them to LEDs, and saving money as a result. The municipalities of Falmouth, Rockland, South Portland, and Bitterford spent considerable resources creating, crafting, and putting out an RFQ for various firms, consultants to help with this process, the acquisition of the lights, all the way through the process of conversion. They received four responses and selected Realterm as the consultant that they went, went with. I also spoke with some other companies myself, and came to the same conclusion that Realterm was, was the most qualified and, and also had a, they've got a heavy presence in the state right now, and are really involved at the state level with this process. So I brought Paul Vassell in with Realterm to-
I'm gonna clarify, so was there a, a request for proposals that was issued, or was it, you, you had some informal conversations and then awarded the contract?
Yeah, we haven't awarded a contract. So what, what we're looking to do is to jump on the RFQ that was already created, submitted, and these guys, these guys responded to, along with the other 25 municipalities that have done the same thing. They've based their award on that RFQ that was released.
Who drafted the RFQ?
That was those four municipalities that I spoke of, it was Falmouth, South Portland, Rockland, and Bitterford.
And they, they drafted it internally, or were handed draft documents, do you know?
They drafted it internally. Paul, would you like to?
First, good evening, thanks for the opportunity to, to meet everybody and, and present our approach here to, to streetlights. As Derek mentioned, we're, we've been working now with the working group, the Streetlight Working Group they call themselves, Falmouth, South Portland, Bitterford, and Rockland, for a little over a year. It's been a bumpy path, particularly with CMP, and trying to work out a structure in which we had three objectives from the very beginning of this project, and that was, we wanted to make sure that the installation got done with one trip to the pole, we wanted to make sure that we were not beholden or dependent on the utility for what we knew was going to be their limited resources, and we wanted to make sure that this was a cost-effective way of getting, getting the streetlights installed. A lot of back and forth, a lot of meetings, we finally have reached our objective, three objectives, to be able to do this in one trip to the pole with outsourced resources, because CMP has been very, very clear that they do not have the resources and they do not want to take this work on. So currently, our, our choice of, of contractor, and I'll go into this a little bit later in the presentation, is a group called On Target. They have sufficient number of bucket trucks and, and crews to be able to not only do your project, but the 26 others that, that we've been awarded over the last year or so. So I'll start off, walk you through our approach, and then leave, leave some time for questions. In fact, you can stop me at any point in time during the presentation if you have any questions or you need clarification. These are the projects that have been awarded to us in, in Maine thus far. And here's an executive summary, we, we were given your streetlight inventory and your most recent bills, and with that data, we ran an analysis on what the project cost and savings would, would look like. So, 1,250 fixtures with three decorative fixtures, your annual energy savings, 61% or 395,000 kilowatt hours, the project cost is just over half a million dollars, and your estimated acquisition cost, acquisition meaning taking ownership of your, of your assets from, from CMP, based on the numbers that, that we have from many other municipalities, $187,000, which gives you a total project cost with acquisition of 774,000 with a payback of just under four years. Very much in line with the other projects that we're, we're doing around Maine, and a fairly attractive ROI for, for an infrastructure project. Looked at from a savings perspective, and essentially there are, there are three drivers when you, when you take a look at, at upgrading your, your streetlights. Most municipalities are concerned with saving money, so you'll see here, your total streetlight expenditures on the second to last row is about $233,000 today, following the conversion and the acquisition of those assets from CMP, that number goes down to 44,000, or a savings of $189,000 a year, 81%. So that's a big driver. Another big driver is the savings in energy, your kilowatt hours, when we go from your existing lighting infrastructure to LEDs, we're gonna be, we're gonna be saving a tremendous amount of energy. They're mu, it's a much more efficient way of lighting your streets. And then lastly, and I'll talk about this later when I talk to you about our approach with regard to streetlight design, we're gonna be, be improving the lighting within your municipality. You'll have a better lit, more optimally lit, and safer municipality when this is over.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, I'm gonna, only gonna ask this question here because it really relates to my hot button, when we were talking about this, and that is that several years ago we removed 200 streetlights because we wanted to save money, six years ago.
Right.
And so it's left a lot of streets dark, and we also want to have the option of adding lights that we may need to in the future if we get a request, police department, everybody says we should have lighting that we don't have before. So I guess what I want to make sure is that, yeah, we're doing before and after upgrades, 1253, but I really think we need to go into this with the idea we're gonna replace what was missing, and two, have the option to add lighting in different areas if we find out we need them in the future, so.
So every project begins with a kickoff meeting, and at that kickoff meeting, this is what we discuss. You'll bring to our attention any particular streets or intersections or areas where you think that you might have either deficient lighting or overlighting, and we'll examine that and decide together whether or not we want to incorporate that into the project. Right now, for the sake of the analysis, we did it purely based on your existing inventory, but the project can be expanded or contracted based on your objectives. We can include parking lots, we can include school lights, we often do that, and most of the projects that we do, we include other outdoor lighting, just makes sense. If you're gonna go through this exercise, and we're gonna spend the time and the resources to do a lighting upgrade, it makes sense to incorporate whatever else you want to include in terms of outdoor lighting.
That would be possible, to get the costs associated with that before we move forward, because I can see that being a large increase that we can't, we go, oh, well, it's not, you know, and we find out because we're, we're doing that, it's significantly more than we wanted to spend.
So, I, I'll walk you through the process, but before we pull the trigger on anything, before we go to procurement, we produce a final document which is called an investment-grade audit, and that investment-grade audit now will include your final inventory and your final replacement costs, as well as your final energy savings. This is a baseline, this is a pre-project indicator of, on what the cost and the savings of the project will look like. We will not have the final cost until we actually know what your final inventory is, because it will be different from what you submitted to us. We've never done a project where the existing inventory corresponded with reality, never.
Terrific, that's, thank you.
I have a, before you move on, if I could, with regard to the annual maintenance costs, can you describe what those are in relation to, what are the obligations of the city with regard to annual maintenance?
Right, so it's, it's a little bit confusing, because you see before the, the upgrade, you see the number zero, and that's merely because CMP includes those maintenance costs embedded within their, within their tariffs and their billing. So what we've done is we've, we've estimated based on 177 completed municipal projects, and what the real maintenance cost will be for your LED fixtures once they're up. You'll, you'll have a 10-year warranty on materials, whatever tier-one manufacturer, luminaire manufacturer we, we opt for, for the project, will all give you 10 years, both on the photos, photocells, as well as the luminaires. So when an LED light fails, it's not repaired, it's replaced. So you don't pay anything for the equipment, what you do pay for is the maintenance call, the bucket truck going up, taking down the existing fixture and putting up your replacement fixture. That number there is what your estimated cost is going to be on an annual basis, based on real numbers. Failure rates for tier-one Cobra head luminaires are estimated to be at .6% per annum. We've got about 193,000 fixtures that have been out there for several years, and our failure rate has been about .4%, actually lower than the stipulated failure rate of the luminaires. So we've got a pretty, pretty, pretty good idea on, on what, on what these costs are gonna be for maintenance.
So is this just based on what the city will spend to pay its employees to go make these sort of maintenance repairs, or is this like an annual fee that goes to your company and you send people out?
We, we ran it, and I'll talk about this a little bit, bit later when I talk to you about installation, what we've worked out with CMP, because they don't have the resources to be able to do this job, is to subcontract one, one of the leading groups in Maine, which is On Target. The maintenance costs then are based on On Target's projected maintenance costs for LED lighting. So, once you take ownership of, of the lights, you'll have an option, if you have the internal resources and you want to take on maintenance yourself, you can do that, and we'll put together the maintenance program for you, or you can subcontract that out.
So this is a, this is based on past experience with failure rates and percentages of cost per unit that have been installed historically that you're familiar with, not specific to any particular type of contract we might be getting into with any provider?
No, but it's taking into consideration the contractor rates with On Target in Maine for this work.
Okay. Based on the number of units that get installed?
Exactly.
Thank you.
I just had one quick one while we're on this subject, so this is probably for Derek. I know in the, as we've been having this ongoing conversation, one of the, the hangups we've had is the potential need for increased electric, electrician capacity within the city to deal with these maintenance costs, so it sounds like, just to confirm what I'm, what I'm hearing, the city would have the, the option of outsourcing that if we did not go the route of increasing our internal staff capacity, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions on the, on the, on the numbers? So I'll go over our approach here, and our strong recommendation, whether or not you move forward with us or you work with somebody else, is that the steps I'm going to review here with a streetlight project, we feel are all essential and critical to a successful Before I go into this, we've, we've included, and we've done this with a number of the larger municipalities in Maine, we've included a suite of pre-project value-added services, which we feel will give you a, a greater exactitude in terms of, of what, what your requirements are, both from a lighting perspective and eventually from a smart control, smart city perspective, which I'll talk about later. So Lux mapping is a technology that we, we have a license for in the United States, and it works in a similar fashion to the way Google maps their streets, together with a lux meter. So, we'll sit down with you and we'll identify certain sections of Auburn, which you feel might have lighting issues, either overlit or underlit, and we'll drive through those and take measurements, and we'll produce a map for you and show you exactly where and by how much you're overlit and underlit before we go into the project. Secondly, LED lighting samples, and I'll talk to you a little bit about the whole conversation and debate right now about color temperature, 3,000 versus 4,000 Kelvin. In a lot of municipalities, it's become contentious, and so we've included now with our project a pilot, a pilot project for you to have a look at should you desire different types of fixtures and different color temperatures before we move forward to procurement. And then lastly, smart control, smart city, which I'll talk about a little bit later, there's a whole host of technologies which you can layer onto your streetlights, which gives you more control, remote control, a whole series of sensors, smart, smart parking sensors, air quality sensors, electronic vehicle charging stations, Wi-Fi, municipal Wi-Fi. We'll talk to you about some of those things, and, and we'll include for you in the project a pilot, so you can test out some of these applications and see if they make sense for the municipality before you move forward.
And if I could interrupt, the previous slide that you had had a cost estimate on total streetlight expenditures, does that vary, can you give us an idea of how much that varies based on whether we're talking about one type of color temperature versus another?
Right. So the only thing that changes, and I'll go into this a little bit later when I discuss color temperature, the efficiencies of lower Kelvin color temperature, be them 2,700 or 3,000, are somewhere between 4 and 8% less efficient than 4,000 Kelvin. So, it's not a major impact when you look at an ROI, a project ROI of 3.9 years, if you're losing 4 to 8%. What it means from a lighting perspective is we're giving you the same amount of lumens on the ground, but if you're using a 3,000 or 2,700 Kelvin color temperature fixture as opposed to 4,000, you may have to use 37 watts rather than 35 watts to get the same lumens on the ground, because of the efficiency differential.
But as far as the hardware goes, it's-
Hardware's the same, the cost is the same, most of the tier-one manufacturers have gotten, gotten out in front of this over the last several years, and they now have lower Kelvin color temperature at all the different wattage levels at the same price. So here's an outline of the turnkey, and I'll go into each one of these steps. Starts with a GIS data collection, photometric design, culminating in an investment-grade audit, installation, project management, incentive work, billing changes, final commissioning, and then sometimes measurement and verification. On the acquisition side, will be your, your advocates, when we sit down and we finalize the acquisition from, from CMP, we're seeing fairly standard pricing on the buyback of the fixtures, mainly because all of that had been negotiated during the last 10 years with the Streetlight Working Group. So the PUC has given directives to both AMIRA, as well as CMP, on how they are to calculate the net book value of these depreciated assets. So here's the foundation of a, of a properly done streetlight project, and particularly important for you or any municipality who's beginning your project by acquiring these assets from the utility, you want to make sure that you know what you're buying, you want to make sure that that inventory is accurate. This will also serve as a baseline to the project as we move from GIS through design and installation. There's a series of different attributes which we're collecting, part of which will become an updated asset management database for Auburn moving forward, so you know exactly what you have when you take ownership of these assets. And most of these other attributes are really important for our internal lighting designers to give you the proper lighting design. They will also then be handed off as we move from design to installation, to the installation crews, so they have all of their data at their fingertips to make sure you have an accurate deployment of the assets. There are a few steps along the project, although this is a turnkey, and most of the communities that engage with us engage with us on a turnkey basis, for the simple reason that this is a project you're gonna do once every 15 or 20 years, it probably doesn't make sense for you to bring on a staff that's trained or experienced in LED streetlight design and conversion. Regardless of the size of the municipalities we work with, and they range from the smallest of 18 lights, to San Diego Gas and Electric, who we're working with now, electric utility in the West Coast with 60,000 lights, most of them subcontract out the work to us, but there is participation from the municipality at different steps along the way. The first, the first inflection point is when we collect the GIS data, we'll sit down with Derek and his team and make sure that all of the data points and the ownership of the lights is accurate. You may have some private lights, you may have some, some lights on, on the periphery of the municipality where we're not sure, is this on a county road, is this on a state load, road, is this privately held, publicly held? We'll hash all of that out with you and with CMP before we finalize the acquisition. As I said before, all of this data then becomes part of your asset management database, and all of the data that we collect and all the designs that we produce here belong to the municipality at the end of the project, it's all transferred over to you, in the format that you need. Typically, Edri files, or Excel, or whatever format is readable and workable for you. So before and after, you know, I, I talked about savings, energy savings, dollar savings, but security and visual acuity should also be important reasons why you want to undertake this project. If, if we look at the evolution of lighting technology, starting from incandescent through mercury vapor, low-pressure sodium, high-pressure sodium, technologies have become somewhat better, but compared to LED, most of them are relatively inexact ways of lighting your streets. With the advent of, of light emitting diodes, we can now give you that light footprint on the ground- the ground in a much more exacting way, give you the coverage of light that you need in a much more efficient way. Typically, it doesn't cost you anymore. In fact, it usually costs you less to properly design your municipality, because we're now dialing down the number of watts that we need to give you the appropriate number of lumens and footprint on the ground. All of the tier-one luminaire manufacturers that we would consider for your project, they all have settings in their fixtures. So, you know, on Street A, we may be working at 100% or 90% setting. On Street B, maybe in a residential area because of the pole spacing, we have a different setting. So, we're optimizing the final light that's set on each one of your streets on a unique street-by-street basis.
Yeah, real quick, is that adjustable in the future, or is that?
It is adjustable in the future.
Without replacing fixtures?
And it can be remotely adjustable for you if you opt to layer on lighting controls.
Yeah.
We'll talk about that later. This has become a more and more common and somewhat contentious topic over the last 12 months or so, since the American Medical Association released a report on purported negative health effects of higher Kelvin color temperature LED streetlights. Our job in this whole discussion and our role is not to take sides and tell people, if you have constituents who are concerned about cadence rhythms and effect on their sleep patterns, that they're right or they're wrong. Some people have a valid concern. Some people are just concerned about the aesthetics. 3,000 or 2,700 color temperature throws off a softer, yellower light as compared to 4,000. So, what we'll do with you as we go through this process is explain, as I explained a little bit before to the gentleman from Ward 1, the, some of the pros and cons, what you give up in terms of efficiencies, but most importantly, what you may give up in terms of visual acuity and safety. So, what we're seeing most often, most of our municipalities in the last six to nine months, since this subject has been at the forefront, has opted for hybrid solutions. So, selecting 4,000 Kelvin, which is the current common Kelvin color temperature for streetlights on Main Street, other downtown streets, other important intersections where you don't want to sacrifice safety or visual acuity. And then, in residential areas or more rural streets, where you're more likely to get pushback from constituents who are looking for a softer, yellower light, combining that with 3,000. Perfectly valid way to light your streets. You're not sacrificing lumens on the ground because we're adjusting those color temperatures for the proper lighting design. Anyway, we'll go over all of this. It's a much longer conversation. We'll take into consideration whatever concerns your constituents have and figure out whatever solution makes sense for you. Project management support, we, when we run our projects, we have a single point of contact. I don't know if Derek's going to be the single point of contact, but whoever it is that you nominate for Auburn, they'll have a one-to-one communication where everything then will funnel down to my GIS department, my design department, my procurement department, but you're dealing with one individual who has a global vision of your project. From a reporting standpoint, typically, we report back to you once every two weeks. Some municipalities like weekly reports. We'll sit down with you, you'll tell us what you want in terms of frequency and content of reports, and we'll keep you informed as this project moves forward. If you want, a lot of municipalities like this application that we've developed, it's live tracking on the web. So, Derek or anybody else who's interested in the municipality will be given a username and a password, and they'll be able to see in real time as this project develops. You'll be able to see the crews, you'll see those lights turn from red to green as they're deployed, you'll see how many units that we're doing each day and where we're working within the municipality. We've spent a lot of time with On Target, going over staging, logistics. There's a lot of money that can be saved by doing this project efficiently. Currently, without the demarcation point that has been instituted by CMP, typically, our installation time is somewhere between 14 and 16 minutes per fixture per pole. If we can reduce a contractor's timeline from 26 minutes to 14 to 16 minutes, that's a lot of man-hours, a lot of savings on installation. So, we'll go over with them the most efficient way to stage the product as it comes in from the manufacturers, as it comes off the pallets. We'll sit down with your folks and go over traffic control and deployment. When are the best times for you to, and for us to schedule this with the least amount of encumbrances? All that will be planned and discussed and programmed for efficiencies. We have an environmental management plan, so all of the existing fixtures and components which can be recycled will be recycled and certified according to state, federal, and local recycling laws. And then, community outreach, I'll talk a little bit about this later on because it's worth a separate discussion. It is an important part of the success of any of these projects. We've learned best practices. We've worked with about 65 different electric utilities throughout the Northeast with most challenges that you can encounter with existing infrastructure, with wiring and fusing, and so we'll go over all of that with our chosen master contractors, make sure that best practices are invoked.
Just to let you know, you probably have like 10 more minutes to go, including questions, so you may want to leave time for that.
Okay. I was going to, community outreach, if you Google municipal LED conversions which have gone awry in the United States, you'll see in many occasions, it's because failure or insufficient community outreach. So, we have a suite of tools at your selection, depending on how much input and how much dialogue you want to have with your constituents. They range from simply publishing, local publication, or posting on your website, FAQs, so anticipating what the questions are for the project and putting up answers before we start. You may want to have an open house. We'll sit there by your side, be able to respond to difficult questions on technology and lighting color temperature and whatnot. We have a very detailed fixture procurement process. We are not a manufacturer. We're agnostic when it comes to technology. We will choose the most appropriate fixture technology for your project based on life cycle cost savings, not just cost, life cycle cost savings. And then, financing, preliminary discussions, it sounds like you're looking to finance this with a bond raise, which is obviously the lowest cost of financing. We offer other options if you're interested. Tax-exempt lease is a very popular way to fund these projects. It's a non-metered service, so it's a very low-risk energy project to finance. We know what the savings are going to be. And very quickly, smart controls, I mentioned that before. We'll have some meetings with you before you move forward with a project. We'll set up a pilot for you if you want to test out some of this technology. A lot of neat stuff you can do with smart controls and smart city applications. And we're deploying a lot of these technologies now in municipalities throughout the Northeast, from video surveillance cameras to air quality control to meshed Wi-Fi networks. It's all integrated now within the streetlight. And that's it.
For Derek, I just want to make sure I understand before the recommendation to have the city enter into a contract with this firm. You said Auburn did issue an RFQ, and is this the only response?
No, we did not issue an RFQ. So, we are taking advantage of the RFQ that was already put out by the four municipalities I mentioned earlier, as well as 25 other municipalities have done the same. So, essentially, we're able to use the same, their costs are based on an open book gross margin, and we're able to use that same price point, with the same scope of services that they proposed as well.
I know the City of Portland is going through this process as well. They're using a different vendor. Can you maybe talk about some of the pros and cons of one vendor over another in terms of your analysis, what technology or support services the City of Portland may have been looking for in their RFQ that we may not be looking for in this service?
I did speak with the firm that they ended up going with, and I tried several times for them to get back to me with questions and received little to no response. As I said earlier, looking at this and looking at the RFQ that was issued, we would essentially turn around and put City of Auburn on the same RFQ and put it out there and most likely receive the same response. So, what we're trying to do is eliminate some of this time that's involved in the process. Each month that goes by that we're sitting idle, we're essentially giving CMP an extra $16,000 a month that we could be saving.
Now, that's not on the council. So, I appreciate your rebuttal back to me, but that's not, the delay has not been on the council, Council of Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have, what, $81,000 that have been allocated in the last budget for this?
That's correct.
So, could you just describe what exactly we would be getting for that? Obviously, it's a significant amount less than the total project cost, and how obligated would a future council be? This is what, our second to last meeting? How obligated would a future council be if we begin to undertake this project with that 10% or a little more? What would be the obligation of a future council to continue?
Sure.
A lot of municipalities are in similar situation as you are. They'd like to embark on the project, but they don't want to commit themselves completely financially. So, we negotiated and agreed with the Streetlight Working Group to have an exit clause. So, before you move to procurement, which is, you know, the largest cost juncture in your project, before we go to installation selection and procurement selection, we've completed the IGA, which means we've done the GIS audit and design. If for whatever reason you don't get funding or your funding hasn't been approved, you can exit the contract.
Right. So, that'd be all the upfront inventory, the data, GIS information, that if it didn't go forward, say next year, we could still utilize that information the following year. It would still be relevant. The cost for that service would be covered under the current $81,000 that we have, more than covered.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really would like to see, you know, a lot of research. If this happens, the money won't be appropriate, it won't be approved until July, right, July 1st, because it'll be in the CIP upcoming.
They want to use this year's CIP.
Oh, is it, this is going to be included in this, because we did the $81,000, but we didn't do $600,000?
Right.
So, where's that money going to come from then? I don't understand.
You're on a path.
It would be, you'd be making a commitment that we're going to be doing that.
Okay. So, we'd be making a commitment to do it, even though we, so we're not going to wait, in other words. Because one of my concerns is, as much as I like this project, I would feel very strange knowing we went into it without really fully vetting and also researching other companies and other, knowing that we're getting a good deal and knowing that we're getting what we want. And not that I have any against this company, I think this is fantastic, but I wouldn't spend $1 million or $700,000 or whatever and not really feel confident, confident that we've got the right program, and we have to feel comfortable as a council knowing we're getting the right deal.
I can agree. Can I just make a quick comment on this? I've had many conversations with Nathan Poore and some of the managers who've been involved in this process before. Nathan is the Town Manager of Falmouth. He's been one of the leaders in this effort on the LED street conversion in the state of Maine, and they did an RFP process in the beginning. They've laid the foundation in terms of what's being done with all these municipalities. The RFQ process, you did have more than real term that you met with. I was there for part of that process. So, there has been some review and some vetting during this process. We are, my confidence is based on the work that's already been done by other municipalities. It is unconventional in terms of the process, but I think that we have seen with the experience with the other municipalities that they've had a good satisfactory experience in terms of the work that they've done with real term and the savings that they've achieved. I appreciate the questions and the comments and the concerns, and I just wanted to let you know where I'm coming from.
Well, if we could get information, whether it is any, whether it be from previous work that other towns and cities have done, because somebody had to have, you know, done some comparison and selected this company as being the best for X reasons. And I really think that we just need to know what those are and what, so just, we know we're not overlooking something. I think that's reasonable when you're going to spend this kind of money.
Sure, absolutely. There was a committee put together that vetted all these firms and proposed.
So, we would have that information maybe available? We got time to look it over, I'm sure?
Sure, I can get that information to you. Yep.
All of this falls under the city's procurement policy, which is why I, with no offense to our guest that's here, I always go back to, so the policy does give you some movements, but anything over $25,000 in bold required to obtain formal competitive bids, bids being both RFQs and RFPs. So, if we're diverting from that, then I want to make sure we're very crystal clear as to why we're diverting from policies we very specifically put in place as required by charter.
And not to be disagreeable, but the, you know, the purchasing policy does allow the city to sole source under certain circumstances if the council decides it makes sense, so.
So, I'm also approaching it from that angle. This looks like a tremendous proposal, and I also trust Derek to have done that research, and procurement policies can be frustrating for this very reason. We probably know where we're going to end up, but it makes sense for us to follow the policy. I'm wondering if the argument is that an RFQ has already occurred, it's just that another city did the RFQ, or whether, and this might be a hybrid argument that you're making, that there's also some aspect to this that makes this a group purchasing program, which is another exception to the procurement policy?
That's correct, yes.
And so, that is a listed exception, and I maybe have more detail as to what the group purchasing program aspects are to this, and that you are working with other municipalities in order to get us a discount that we wouldn't otherwise get if the group purchasing program weren't in place.
All of this was part of the negotiations with the working group. They were looking at the project not from their, just their own perspective, but the idea with Nathan Tex, Larry, from the very beginning was, we're going to try to clear the path here for whichever municipalities in Maine wish to undertake this conversion. And it was, you know, it was a fairly arduous negotiation with them, putting in place a structure, and we opted for the cost-plus-open-book methodology because they felt, and so did we, that it would be in line with transparency and other municipalities who were coming on board later on to see at the forefront of the project, this is what we make on the project. We're partners in this. We're going through an RFP every step along the way, and you know what our compensation is. It's 17%. If you take a look at the industry standards, you can look up online, different bids for lighting projects, and take a look at the numbers, I think you'll find that it's pretty competitive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just to clarify, you said the subcontract that you worked through for installation and maintenance is On Target?
Right now, On Target is the only subcontract that's certified by CMP to do their line work and to put in the fuse. I didn't talk too much about the fuse because it's highly, you know, it's fairly technical, but it's a demarcation point which divides the service between the grid and the municipality. Good idea. Every project we've ever done has a demarcation point. CMP insists that they are the only ones that can deploy this demarcation point, and On Target's the only certified subcontractor today that can do this. Should the market open up to more certifications, we will open it up to further bidding. We're going to get you the best price we can with the most qualified subcontractor.
Sure.
Today, we're convinced that On Target is that subcontractor.
And are they main-based or?
Are they main-based? Yes. They actually share infrastructure with CMP. The company was started by ex-CMP employees.
Are there workers IBW?
Sorry?
Are there workers IBW, do you know, are they union?
They are bringing on IBW master contractors to conform to the P. They are bringing on IBW master contractors to conform to the PUC ruling of necessary certification once the municipality takes ownership of that infrastructure.
Thank you.
See no further questions procedurally? Are you, is the staff planning to prepare an order for this council's last meeting that would obligate the future council to this contract? What's the recommendation?
That would be the recommendation. We would like to be able to move forward for the reasons that we talked about and more.
So I guess we'll have, this will be on the next agenda. My only request, and should I have to be a tie-breaking vote, I guess I'll put that out there. I want to see the written analysis of how this group, whatever you're calling it, follows our procurement policy and any procedures set up within the Finance Department. I get very concerned when something like this comes to us, which is outside of what our, the intent of our procurement policy, without that background, that we just jump right into or recommend in giving this contract. So I want to see that analysis on the front end included in the packet.
I agree.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item. Mr. Goyette wants us to take some land off the tax roll. Freely offered one.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Before you, in the packet, there is a deed written by Daniel T. Burge, who used to live in Auburn, currently lives in Florida. He deeded a parcel of land to the city last year. The city has yet to accept that parcel of land, and I'm here today asking you to accept it. The parcel of land is located at 25 Dell Court, which is a dead end. If you look at the maps that I've provided, there's one that shows it's out behind EL High School and the tennis courts off Cushman Place, which is parallel to Western Ave. The parcel does not have any road frontage, and Mr. T. Burge has tried to market this parcel of land for the developers. But if you look at the topographic map, that's also included in your packet, you can see the parcel drops almost 30 feet across it. It's extremely steep, extremely expensive to develop. You'd have to bring in fill, build retaining walls, and you'd have to construct the road to be able to get it street access. So essentially, it's a, not a landlocked parcel, but it's a prohibitive developable parcel. The city has it assessed at $3,600, and I'm asking you to accept the deed and take ownership of this parcel. The city's snow dump out behind EL High School drains to this parcel. You can see, I'm not sure if you guys got color copies or not, but you can see it has a large body of water on it. There is the opportunity, if you look at the map, 15 Dell Court does tend to mow the lawn on parcel, a portion of this parcel, and they have expressed interest in purchasing that portion of the parcel, which they maintain. The city would be open to that once we take ownership. Mr. T. Burge decided to go this route because he just didn't want to stop paying taxes and have the city just take ownership anyways, so.
When did Mr. T. Burge approach the city to take ownership?
Oh, I believe he started talking with Eric, still here, two years ago, maybe?
I believe it was two or three years ago. It's been a while.
So right now, we have an offer on the table of the land?
Correct.
There's been no communication to him documenting this as a gift for tax purposes or otherwise, correct?
Yes, we've talked to him repeatedly. I talked to him, oh, maybe a month ago about this and told him it was coming up on the agenda.
And we had talked about it before he deeded the property. And then eventually, not hearing back from him, we received notice from the Registry of Deeds that he had already transferred the property to the city without telling us.
But he hasn't taken a charitable deduction for this, correct?
He, I know in the packet, we showed you this MRS sheet. He, I'm not sure if he actually filed this because it's not signed by the city. So I think this is what he wants to do, is take a charitable deduction.
Is there any reason why he wouldn't sell this property to the person who wants part of the lawn? Why are we the middleman?
He is, lives in Florida, just wants to be done with it, essentially. He tried to market it, and I believe, can he sell a portion?
We had connected him with the neighbor. A portion of it is the drainage area for the city's snow dump, so there is some value in not having a private property owner that's upset with the city for putting a lot of drainage onto their property.
I guess the question there is, the portion that the 15 Dell Court owner wants would not be the entire parcel. You would need to subdivide the parcel in order to sell that portion of 15 Dell Court.
Keeping in mind that the Edward Little property is adjacent, that getting too cute with real estate deals on a property that has an uncertain future, either for redevelopment there where this property may be a valuable connection or?
And that's why we, the way the info sheet's written up, it's an option. If the city were to want to do that, then we could. If not, we could just hold on to the property.
What liability does the city have for drainage from an adjacent property?
Historically, we are very little because it's always drained here. This isn't, we don't have, we couldn't find a written easement, which is always sticky ground, but it's one of those, it's always drained there. The city hasn't created a new situation, so we have rights, prescriptive rights. But, I mean, you could get into a, you could have a lot of fun in the courts if you wanted to argue.
Well, with no offense to Mr. T. Burge, someone owning property that they may not find something they can do with and wanting to get a charitable deduction by walking away from it, I don't think it's a practice we should encourage. I think if he wants to walk away from the property and we take it by tax lien, so be it. If he wants to sell it to an abutter for a buck to get it off his dime, so be it. But the notion that we would just take property and give people a deduction because they don't want to own it anymore, that's a very dangerous precedent. So I would urge, I would urge the council to say, we appreciate the offer, but no thanks. But you guys get to vote. Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I too am a little bit concerned about that for those reasons, but mostly I'm worried about the liability of owning a land that's that much of a wet, looks like it's a wetland now. I mean, whether it's been caused by our snow drain or not, whenever we start getting involved in that, there's environmental impacts possibly that were being ignored until after somebody with deeper pockets owns the property or whatever. I just think there's no advantage, strategic advantage for us to own this. There's no real advantage for long-term gain or economic development. There really, there's no reason for us to take it over, so I just don't see the reason why we would.
From which parcel is it draining?
If you, you have to look at the bigger map. See, it comes across from, to the, if you're looking at the tennis courts from the road to EL, to the right-hand side, that whole, basically all of Western Avenue drains to that low spot down there.
I mean, what's, what's the, what's the upside for the city here, if there is one?
That we would control the parcel that all the snow melt goes to. So if there was a need to clean or pick up rubbish or anything like that, we would have that right.
Is that worth $3,600 to us? It's, I'm asking, how about the?
Is it? I guess that's for you to decide.
So we stop dumping snow there in five years because the high schools move somewhere else now?
Right.
Yeah, have we been, have we received a notice of nuisance claim or anything of that sort from the landowner? Has he asked, he asked that we stop doing that in any way?
How long have we been doing it?
Oh, I can get to a long time.
So you said there might be, like, to the, like, prescribe, like, it might be a prescriptive right at this point, okay.
One thing for sure, if you ask the neighbors if they'd want to stop, they'd want to stop tomorrow. Because they don't like, they don't like it up there. It's a very noisy place to be at night.
Dan, why is this important?
To the city?
Yes, to the city.
I'm just trying to get the issue closed in terms of our office. It, it's not overly important to the city. It would help tie up a sort of a loose end where our snow belt goes. But other than that, it's not a developable, you know, easily developable lot by any means.
So if this doesn't happen?
Business as usual for me.
Okay.
If somebody developed this lot, would it be a hardship for us later if he decided, you're dumping way too much snow and the pond gets too big or whatever?
No, we would have, you can't alter a drainage course, so because this is a wetland, he would have setbacks that he would have to maintain to that area. It would be, he'd be better off in a lot of the places than spending his money here.
I think my inclination would be to say if we end up owning it, it's via tax lien rather than purchase.
That's fine.
Census to that?
Yeah, I'm on board with that idea. Thank you.
Last workshop item is an executive session. I don't know how, is that planned to be the entire 30 minutes?
Maybe, but probably not.
Do we know the second executive session doesn't require action at the end of the meeting? Is that expected to be a lengthier schedule?
No, it should not. It's just a labor contract.
Let's hope for efficiency. Perhaps we could tackle both.
Mr. Mayor, I move we enter executive session to discuss an economic development matter pursuant to one MRSA Section 405-6C.
So the second?
Second.
Motion by Council Burns, second from Council Titus. Those in favor, show of hands. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Okay. That carries 6-0. Council Stone absent.
Good evening. Call to order this meeting of the Auburn City Council for November 6th, 2017. If you'd all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a slate of five consent calendar items. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Counselor Pross, second by Counselor Burns. Those in favor, show of hands. Those opposed, five zero two. At the minutes of October 16th, 2017, would entertain a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Burns, second by Counselor Walker. Those in favor, show of hands. Those opposed, five zero two. We have no communications, presentations, or recognitions. First open session of the evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, Mr. Manager. I am here tonight as the Director of the Auburn Public Library. I'm Mamie Anfroy-Nye. I'm here to invite citizens to come and visit the library to see an exhibit entitled "Marking Time: Voyage to Vietnam", which is the stories of young American soldiers and Marines going to Vietnam during the 1960s through go free left on the troop ships bunk campuses. The exhibit was developed by Art and Lee Beltrone of Keswick, Virginia, who salvaged these campuses and other artifacts from the USS General Nelson M. Walker. The exhibit is on display on the first floor of the library until the 16th this month, and it's viewable during normal business hours, and there is more information about it on our website.
Thank you. Close the open session. We have an ordinance, second reading with respect to general assistance. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopts Order 11-10162017, amending Chapter 24, Article 2, Division 1, Section 24 and 23 of the General Assistance Ordinance, annual adjustment to maximum benefits, et cetera.
Second. Motion by Counselor Burns and the second by Counselor Walker. The second reading, is there any public comment? Seeing now, I'll bring it to the council on a debate. Ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Counselor Pross?
Yes.
Counselor Titus?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
Carry six zero one with Counselor Stone, absent. Item two unfinished business, second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopts Order 12-10162017, amending the General Assistance Ordinance, Chapter 24, Article 2, Division 1, Section 24 and 21. Information from other sources, determination of family members' ability to pay.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Burns, second by Counselor Walker for ordinance 12-10162017. This is a second reading. Is there any public comment? Seeing now, I'll bring it back to the councils on any debate. Seeing now, I will ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Counselor Pross?
Yes.
Counselor Titus?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
Carry six zero one. Item three is in order.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopts Order 95-10162017, authorizing staff to proceed with the discontinuance of a section of the Troy Street right-of-way.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Burns, second by Counselor Pross for Order 95-10162017. Looks like we have staff in front of us. I'll yield the floor to staff before asking for any debate.
Basically, what we're looking for is to have the council approve, to have staff move forward on the discontinuance and to schedule a public reading. So, we're looking at moving forward at discontinuance of Troy Street. Obviously, we've got a large project going on a sale of a purchase and sale agreement for a city-owned property. And the first step we'd look forward on that is to estimate the potential damages to the adjacent property owners and go into a, and go into a notice with a public hearing. So, we have, we brought forward some of the pictures of the proposed discontinuance. I think last time, there was some confusion on the discontinuance. We are looking for discontinuing 349 feet, plus or minus by thirty to thirty-two feet.
So, the first time this came up, about a month ago, it was communicated through a question from Counselor Titus, and the answer referenced that the purchase and sale agreement did not include the entirety of the right-of-way, just the right-of-way that was adjacent to the property the city sold to the developer. That question came up at the last meeting and was certainly part of the tabling motion, and we're seeing that again tonight. Can we clarify what was actually in the purchase and sale agreement that was executed? Because we asked for that to be included in the packet, and I had not seen that yet.
The discontinuance extends the full length from library to Hampshire. The portion of the property that would be conveyed to the developer of the Troy Street project would be limited to the frontage along Troy Street that that parcel has. So, the map that's here tonight shows the full length that's proposed for discontinuance. I do have a map that shows more accurately what would be used in the purchase and sales agreement that does not extend the full length. I don't know for sure if that has been adjusted in the purchase and sales agreement at this point or not, but we have spoken with the developer about it.
Other council questions, probably? Just that one. So, the question that precipitated the tabling motion last meeting, it sounds like we still don't have a satisfactory answer. So, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, it looks like Mr. Cousins is attempting to pull up the purchase and sale. That was the request for information from the meeting, the first meeting in October.
And I think we can clearly say, whether we have that map or not tonight, that the discussion about the discontinuance is for the full length. The purchase and sales agreement will be limited to the portion that fronts on the parcel that's being sold.
Other questions from the council? Counselor Young?
I guess the question is, could we discontinue only part of the street, not the whole street?
We looked at it, and we just think the best option is to discontinue the whole street and start that as a separate process. The purchase and sale is going to be reflected to that portion that Eric was showing. I don't know if he's got it up here, which is a separate subject that we'll be addressing in the purchase and sale agreement. So, this is for us to move forward with the discontinuance of that total street.
Be liable for more damages by discontinuing more of the street than we need to discontinue?
Well, the first thing we'll look at is the potential of damages. We don't believe there's going to be any damage to speak of.
Am I understanding that when we discontinue a street, then it reverts to the owners of the abutting property that that street lays on?
Well, I think that goes to the other side on this one. Gary, our engineer, looked at that. But we'd be keeping, excuse me, we would keep and preserve a public access.
We would maintain a public access easement? Is that what you just said?
So, it would revert back to the owners of the abutting on either side of that street? So, we wouldn't own it. We'd have to negotiate an easement, which hasn't happened yet, obviously. So, are we moving discontinuous street before we're ready?
Well, I think that's why the engineer recommended that we discontinue it.
Discontinue and retain the public easement. We have the public passage rights, and we would keep those after the discontinuance.
For just that one section, or?
The complete section of Troy Street would be discontinued, but we keep our rights to the road. We wouldn't be maintaining it, but we keep the rights to the road.
I guess I'm confused.
That would be the first step that we'd be looking into, is see if there's any actual damages, which we don't believe there will be significant for damages.
So, there's a couple of points of confusion, and some of this is just driven by information that's been asked for that hasn't been received. So, the first item was, what are we discontinuing? And then, what exactly is in the purchase and sale? So, we've heard of public statements that that map is what's attached to the purchase and sale that was executed. But we haven't actually, the council hasn't seen that document, and it wishes to, to make sure that that's the case. The other piece around retaining a public access easement, there was some conversation at the first meeting in October about Public Works wanting to maintain that for ease of truck movement, not having to go out to Union Street or back to Spring as part of plow routes. Is there anything that would stop staff from providing that as written analysis with an example of what type of public access easement it would propose to retain in the discontinuance?
So, the original purchase and sales showed the complete section of Troy Street between library and Hampshire. After the council's meeting last time, we spoke with the developer. They're fully open to amending it and limit that to the portion that fronts on their parcel.
So, the purchase and sale that was executed includes the entirety of Troy Street?
That's correct. That's correct. It's right there. But we, as staff, have the...
But what was said to us in October, if you went to the tape, was that's not what was executed. What was executed was just adjacent to their property.
I don't believe that's true, but I mean, I can go, we could pull it tomorrow. We're trying to start a process whereby we put the time into getting you all of the information you need to understand what the damages are, and then make a decision whether or not you want to discontinue the street. So, this does not finalize the discontinuance. This allows us to invest the resources to get you the information to make an informed decision.
I think that that gets to a part where I'm a little uncomfortable of what this order actually does. Without answers to those questions, it's unclear to me what the order is authorizing you to do. Because it seems like an open-ended authorization without clarity as to what the conditions of that authorization is.
Right now, we're looking to move forward to look at the damages, and if we think the damages aren't going to be significant, then we can move forward with the discontinuance and recommend that we move forward with the discontinuance, have the public hearings and get public input on it. The purchase and sale, the amendment to that can be brought back in and discussed with the board to make sure they're happy with the changes of that, but we separated that out, and the developer is fine with that. We're just trying to start the process with this discontinuance and see what the actual damages would be and start the public hearing process.
So, I think we're talking across each other, and I'm trying to reconcile that. I think what the council, you're looking to initiate the process, saying that this isn't the final step. There will be subsequent steps in votes of the council. This council, likely the next council now. What I hear the council saying is, this language as it reads, if you're George Jane on the street, not only looks conclusive, but it's also open-ended. So, the issues that have been raised about what's actually going to be sold, what rights does the city want to maintain in any process? Is there any reason why we couldn't include those in the order as a means to say, here are, here's what the city is looking to accomplish as it goes through a public process around a potential discontinuance? Go ahead.
It seems, it seems that if we don't move forward with this initial step, that our hands would be tied in some ways in approaching the developer and negotiating particular, specific amendments to the purchase and sale agreement, and also would affect how we would approach other landowners that are abutting the public right-of-way and how we would negotiate with them in terms of what those damages might look like. That's my understanding, anyway.
I would encourage the council to give more direction if that's what your will is. This project is an important project, as you all know. I know you understand that. What we're looking at is workforce development project that we badly need in the community. And if you want to give more specific direction on this order, then I would urge you to do that. We need to move forward and to satisfy your concerns. If you do want to give more specific direction, then I'd encourage you to do that.
Just a question from your point, I mean, you guys, it looks like what you want to do is you want to discontinue Troy Street, the whole thing.
That's correct.
So, why?
It doesn't serve any purpose to save a section of on the end if the landowners at the end of that property doesn't have an objection to it. After talking with public services, I don't think they want to be in there doing the snow removal. The contractor for the property, for the proposed project, would be maintaining that, and they have maintenance crews for that. So, it's just a simple discontinuance, you know, after dealing with our city engineer who's been doing this for thirty-some years. That's how we recommend in moving forward with it.
And from public services through this process, they do not want to maintain a short dead-end section of Troy Street going forward. If it's not a through street, they don't want to be obligated to maintain and build a turnaround at the property line.
When you say maintain, you mean pavement rehabilitation or winter road maintenance?
Both.
But I, so if it was going to stay in the plow routes, which is why we would have a public access easement, are you saying that they're going to lift their blade on library and touch back down on Hampshire?
They're not going to, they won't be doing snow removal there. Well, right now, they plow it, might have some snow removal, but if we put a dead end, there'd be snow removal that would need to be done and not just plowing. So, that would be discontinued to winter maintenance and to maintenance. It's just open for, to keep the public way through there.
Say that again?
It would be closed to, we would not winter, maintain it for winter.
So, we would not plow Troy Street? Once we discontinue it, we would not lay a plow on Troy Street?
That would be taken care of by the building, the construction of the new building, investors.
And that change would be limited to the section between Library Avenue and Hampshire Street?
So, that would still be an area that would not be plowed, it just wouldn't, it would be untouched?
It would be plowed as a private parking lot if the development happens.
So, we would be plowing it?
It would be plowed, like Hannaford, for example, hires a contractor to plow their parking lot. The developer would hire a contractor to plow this as a parking lot.
Even the end that is not theirs? You know, you're talking about discontinuing this road, but they're only taking over a certain section of it. There's that end piece that will just be, belong to the abutters on either side.
Public services wants to, if they're going to make a dead end, they want to discontinue winter maintenance on the whole section, yes.
The whole section.
That all makes a lot of sense to me, and I think that on our information sheet that was provided to the council by staff, there's one sentence that really stands out. It says, "This block of Troy Street is a nondescript, seldom-used public street." And that is one aspect of this development project that has been appealing to me personally as a counselor, is that here's an opportunity to have some development that we need for the reasons that the manager spoke to just a few minutes ago. But that what we're talking about here is a nondescript, seldom-used public street, and for that reason, I would support the motion on the floor.
Now, what would happen if... Now, what would happen if this project were not to proceed?
I, I would suggest that we don't move forward with the discontinuance if this remains a public parcel.
So will it come before this board to approve the final discontinuance?
Yes, it would absolutely have to. The, the step right now is to authorize, to get the information to bring back to you for a final discontinuance.
And, and that's where it comes back to me with my original question. I, I don't understand why you need a vote from us to authorize you to acquire information that would subsequently require us to make an action later in order to authorize the discontinuance, which we wouldn't pursue if this project didn't occur anyway.
As part of the purchase and sale agreement for the project go forward, this is what the, the investors are, are looking at. So we brought this forward to show the project that the council supported the discontinuance and that we can start moving forward with this. At the point in time when the project goes forward and it gets approved, and then at that point in time, the, the discontinuance can go into effect.
I, I still just don't understand the legal effect of our vote this evening. It's authorizing you to go pro, pro, obtain and provide us information later?
We, we're going to start the, the estimates of the potential damages and start the process, the, the six-step process that the state requires us to do.
So the, so, so there's, is step one, the council voting to direct staff to do the six-step process? I, I guess Adam's wondering if the council, by authorizing the PNS around this, needs to take further action before you walk through those steps? Because the public hearing and the weighing of those things would come later. So there's a council actually have to vote? Are, are we creating more confusion by, by voting now to initiate a process where staff will bring information back to be analyzed and voted on?
Not at this point. I mean, we could simply just move forward with the project and then have, ask by the council, why did we do that and waste of money, I guess? But what we're trying to do is show support for our project and show that we are moving forward in the discontinuance of a road for a multimillion-dollar project on an empty lot that's been sitting there for a, a long time with no projects.
But the question is raised, what are we authorizing when we authorize you to do something? And if, you know, you, you somewhat indicated what my concern is, is that you would take an authorization of this to do whatever, and then later on, push us towards a purchase and sale agreement that we may not agree to?
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to tie the discontinuance of the road into a purchase and sale of property. The, the, one is being discontinued for a project, and then how we want to do the purchase and the sale of that property can then be discussed separately and be ironed out. I'm, I'm sure everybody wants the project to go forward, so that's what we're trying to do, is to, you know, we have quite a few obstacles with this project. We knew that because of its location, its zoning, and other, other obstacles that we had. So we're just trying to push this project forward.
Council questions or debate?
I will ask for a vote on the order by a show of hands. Those in favor of the order? Those opposed to the order? Carrie's four to two. Can I have a motion for that order?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopts order 96-10162017, authorizing $110,000 in home funds to be reserved for the Troy Street Workforce Housing Project.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Burns, second by Counselor Pross. Is there any public comment? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any council debate? Seeing none, those in favor of the order, show of hands. Those opposed? Carrie's five to one with Counselor Lee in opposition.
Powerpoint.
Item five?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that the council adopt order 97-10162017.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Pross, second by Counselor Burns for order 97-10162017. Turn the floor over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is an item that I inherited when I became city manager. The memorandum of understanding between the city and the Auburn Business Development Corporation has been discussed and debated quite some time. I was hired to be a consensus builder. I think that it's important we have this memorandum of understanding approved. I think the council and the mayor have, through their discussions that have gone on, have made several points with the Auburn Business Development Corporation, which the corporation has concurred with. Eric, if you could go forward. For the public, the Auburn Business Development Corporation was founded in 1972. It's a not-for-profit organization that works to assist with business recruitment and expansion in the city of Auburn. Since its founding, ABDC has partnered with the city and has been successful in working with the city in a number of projects. The Auburn Industrial Park is an example of that. The purpose of the MOU is to clarify and confirm the uses of program income resulting from sales of commercial industrial lots. As you're aware, the MOU addresses several factors, including a joint agreement between the city and ABDC regarding income utilization called the Income Reutilization Plan, as set forth by the EDA, the Economic Development Administration in Washington, DC. The city has agreed with this MOU to advance the cost of extending high-speed fiber infrastructure in order to connect to existing fiber. The ABDC agrees to establish a pool of funds of $35,000 that will be held by the city for payment of wetland mitigation. The city and ABDC agree to meet periodically and agree to use mediation if needed to resolve any disputes that may arise. There is a long history here of the city and ABDC working together. The Kitty Hawk Industrial Park is another example of that. In addition to that, the city has worked to develop the industrial park, and KDZC purchases land on, purchased land on the Lewiston Junction, Junction Road with the assistance of ABDC in 2009. So there are many examples of where the ABDC has assisted us. I cannot imagine the city of Auburn moving forward, being successful, economic development, without an entity like the Auburn Business Development Corporation. I know you're aware of the, the history, and I won't go through all of these different items here. I strongly encourage the council to support the agreement being signed, and happy to, with Michael's assistance and Eric's, to try and answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Any council discussion or debate? Counselor Pross?
I just want to say that I'm glad that we're at this endpoint at long last. I feel that the ABDC has been a interesting challenge for this council specifically, but at the end of the day, that the parties were able to get together to negotiate reasonable terms around the MOU that not only reflect the intent of the regulations that govern these types of economic development projects under federal law, and how income from these types of taxpayer-supported projects are to be used, but also give some flexibility to ABDC to be successful in the future. And I think that we really did a good job to strike that bargain, and I'm looking at our manager really in pulling the final pieces of that together with his team to get us to this landing spot. So I know that there was a lot of discussion in Hardwick in the past over these issues, but I feel that we're at a point in time where we need to move forward with this, and I want to thank staff for their supporting our position and moving forward and getting us here.
Any comments? Counselor Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just echo Counselor Pross's comments. This is an issue that this council has been discussing often, unfortunately necessarily in executive session because of the ongoing nature of negotiation for two years now. I think we've all been at times frustrated with how long this process has, has taken. But I think the result of this work, as, as the manager said, is really the result of, you know, good-faith collaboration between the governing bodies of, of these two entities that, at this point, have been discussing this issue and this piece of land for so long that many of the people who are discussing it today had no hand at all in the, the initial outset of this, this relationship on this property out off of Kitty Hawk. So I'm, I'm glad to see that before this, this council adjourns for the last time, we are able to get this MOU signed, put ourselves on a good footing with, with the ABDC, and build a, a positive working relationship as we move forward, so that we can be, continue to develop these important properties within the city of Auburn. So I'd encourage my fellow counselors to support this MOU.
Are there speeches or debate? Counselor Titus?
No, I just want to bring up the fact that this particular, I mean, I, I inherited this too as a counselor, and I know it's been going on for a long time. But I just wanted to point out that it was 2006 that this industrial park that we're talking about right now first started. The city bonded money to get this thing on, off the ground. And since then, we've had no luck in selling any property or lots in this industrial park. Hopefully, we can now in the future. We're not sure. But I think the public just needs to know that the city of Auburn has had a lot invested here, a lot on the line, for ten years. And we want to see some sort of return on this investment. Back when it was done, it was probably supposed that if you build it, they will come. And unfortunately, that didn't happen here. Hopefully, now, moving forward, we can get some action there so the city of Auburn taxpayers are protected. That was our number-one goal through this entire negotiation. Thank you.
I will ask the, no, it's just a raising of hands. I see Counselor Lee is, is not here. I will ask for a vote by a show of hands. Those in support of the order? Those opposed? Five zero two with Counselor Lee out of the room. Counselor Stone absent. New business, item six.
Public hearing, what do you be looking for in terms of-
I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we open the public hearing for the CDBG substantial amendment.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Burns and a second by Counselor Titus. Notice was printed in the newspaper. I will open the public hearing on the substantial amendment to the federal fiscal year 2017 action plan. Seeing no comment, I'll close the public hearing. I assume action will be scheduled at the next meeting. This will be on the November 20th agenda. All right, excellent. Thank you. Counselor Lee?
Mr. Mayor, I move orders 104, 11062017, 105, 11062017, and 106, 11062017 to appoint Amy Dietrich to the Board of Assessment for a term expiration of 10/1/22, Shelley Norton to the Conservation Commission, term expiration 6/1/20, Christopher Gendron to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term expiration 10/1/2020, Bruce Richardson, Zoning Board of Appeals, term expiration 10/1/2020, Courtney McDonough to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term expiration 10/1/2020.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Lee, second by Counselor Walker. That's for orders 104, 105, and 106, as included in the packet. I'll take any public comment? Please come forward and share your name and address, please. Nope. If you could please just grab a seat so we can hear you on the microphone. We've got, we've got folks at home that want to be able to hear you as well. So you just pull it towards you. There you go.
Yeah, Bruce Richardson. I'm, uh, reappointed. Try it, too.
Wonderful. Well, we appreciate you coming out.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. We don't always get our potential appointees coming to the meeting, so.
Good to see you.
Ward five. There's a little plug for Leroy. All right. Thank you for coming out.
Hey, any comments? Any questions?
All set.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Keep your fingers crossed. The vote's coming next. Any council debate?
I, I would just say, I, I know Counselor Stone's not here, but Counselors Walker, Stone, and myself, I, I think had a fun time at our final appointment committee meeting going over these, these appointments. And most of these are indeed reappointments, folks who have served in these positions in the past and are looking to continue their service to the city in these voluntary boards. And I would encourage my fellow counselors to endorse the recommendations of the appointment committee.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Richardson for showing up. I do like to see it when folks who are being appointed actually come in front of the council so that we can at least see your face. It's nice to see it.
With that, I will ask for a vote on those three orders by a show of hands. Those in favor? Those opposed? Carrie's six zero one. You're in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 under new business, would entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the council adopt order 107-11062017, approving liquor license request for Hinglong Inc., doing business at Tintin Buffet.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Pross and a second by Counselor Walker. I will open the public hearing. Seeing no comment, as folks often ask, I'll look to the chief. Any concerns? Chief is happy. Any council debate? Seeing none, I will ask for a vote on the order. It's order 107 by a show of hands. Those in favor? Those opposed? Carrie's six zero one. Item 11, entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopts order 108-11062017, which is a history trail proposal.
Second.
A motion by Counselor Burns, second by Counselor Walker for order 108-11062017. Any council debate? Public comment? Back to the council. Those in favor of the order, a show of hands. Those opposed? Six zero one. Moving forward. Good stuff. Item 12 is an ordinance amendment, workshop at the last meeting. Entertain a motion. This is first reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopts ordinance 13-11062017, amending the code of ordinances, chapter 60, section 60 dash 2, public hearing and first reading.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Burns, second by Counselor Walker for ordinance 13-11062017. I will open the first reading. Close the first reading, bring it back to the council. Is there any council debate? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk for a roll call.
Counselor Pross?
Yes.
Counselor, um, Titus?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
Carrie's six zero one. Item 13 is a resolve. entertain a motion, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopts resolve 04-11062017, authorizing the city of Auburn to join a lawsuit against opiate drug companies.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Burns and a second by Counselor Walker.
Mr. Mayor, as this involves my firm, I'm going to recuse myself.
Sir. It's on the floor. Would open the floor for any public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for debate. Pross?
I just want to express my support for entering into this litigation as a party. The city of Auburn has obviously had a lot of expenses associated with the opioid crisis, and there's a good deal of evidence to suggest that there was some information that was in the hands of the companies that created these drugs about the potential risks associated with addiction- with addiction to the opioid substances that they were marketing very actively with doctors through the years, and there were millions and millions and millions of dollars that were made. And when I look at this type of litigation, I think about the tobacco class action settlement that involved the states as parties. And it seems to me that this approach that's being pursued by Napoleon Skolnick, a major national law firm that's really spearheading all of this, and having local counsel here in the city of Auburn to represent Auburn's interests, it's an opportunity for the municipality to step in as a party and sort of dictate its own terms of the outcome of eventual class action proceedings instead of petitioning to the state or to the national government, which may be the party to the sole party to the class action. So it's really the prime opportunity for the city to recoup its expenses that it suffered as they're associated with the opioid epidemic in our country and how it's affected our community. And I don't want us to miss out on that opportunity. So I'm voting in favor of this tonight, and I urge my fellow counselors to do the same.
Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo, again, Counselor Pross's support of this resolve. I think the opioid epidemic has been raging long enough that there are few of us in this community who have not been personally touched by this crisis. The loss felt on a personal level in the Twin Cities has been immense as a result of the opioid epidemic. And likewise, the costs to the city have been immense in treating, preventing, and trying to fight this crisis. I think if there has been malfeasance that's been committed by drug manufacturers in misinterpreting or misrepresenting their products that have led to the growth of this crisis, the city has a duty to engage, to make sure that we are, to the fullest extent possible, made whole for the costs that we are bearing as a community for what could have been potentially a preventable crisis. So I'd encourage my fellow counselors to join me in voting yes to adopt this resolution.
Counselor Titus?
Thank you. I did have one thing I wanted to discuss about this, the resolve, the whereas of this resolve. Is the staff bonded by this resolve, the wording of it? Or is this just simply a?
This is the language that other municipalities have used, and it's been recommended by council.
That's correct.
But are they bound by it?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Maybe I'll bring my concern up first. My concern is I see in two areas, it talks about whereas, should the city recover damages through these proceedings? Is the intention of the city council that amounts recovered be used to support law enforcement, education, and treatment efforts aimed at combating this epidemic? And then we have a final resolve at the end that says, is the intention of the city council that any proceeds received from the city as a result of these proceedings be dedicated in full to law enforcement, education, treatment efforts aimed at combating the opioid epidemic? And my only concern there is, as Counselor Pross had mentioned, and so did Grady, is that we want it to be made whole. We want to offset some costs that we have incurred because of this battle. What I read here is potentially, we won't receive that relief, we'll spend more, and we'll spend this money on that only, and it will not change any budgetary lines, that we will spend this money when it comes in on extra work. And I don't want to know if this council is, that's what they want to do. Because that's what I read this being.
If the cost has been incurred and you're reimbursing yourself, that is putting those funds towards that use. As was discussed with council in executive session, but we're here and the public now can be said again.
But if we have incurred costs.
Is that, and if there is a settlement, any plan for disbursement or use of that settlement would come to this body. This body would make the ultimate decision.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is if we're not bound by this, it's just wording.
You're bound by this as far as the next council votes to override you. This is simply a council action.
Okay, so they would have to come to us when they say, okay, we have these funds, what do we, this is what we propose to do with it, and the council will have a chance to approve those funds and what they're used for.
I would suspect that the litigation process, designed as it is, would spell out specifically what those actual dollar amounts of damages are. And to a future council that's looking at revenues that come in that it has to expend with regard to the settlement, it would have the opportunity, which we don't have sitting here today, we don't know what those dollar amounts are, but those damage calculations will be done through the court process as it plays out. And we would have, the future council sitting here would have the opportunity to look at those numbers and say, look, it's only right for us to take this out and set it here. And as I would look at this resolve, nothing would preclude that future council from making that determination on how that money should be set aside and divided.
And I would just say furthermore, you know, while a future council may not be bound by, you know, our preference within this resolve, I think it is important for us to memorialize our preference here as a body. I support this language as it's written because the funds we have currently to deal with the opioid epidemic, I don't think are sufficient to fully engage with the problem. And I think if I were on the council that saw these funds, I would certainly want to look to, in terms of making this community whole again, I mean, making this community whole in a way that we are able to effectively fight the opioid epidemic. So my preference would be this language, recognizing that it's simply a statement of preference and not something that would actually bind a future council if they chose to make an alternate judgment.
I will ask for a vote on the resolve by a show of hands. Those in favor, show of hands. Those opposed? Carrie four, one, two, with Counselor Titus in opposition, Counselor Lee excused for conflict, and Counselor Stone excused, absent. Okay. Reports. Upcoming activities. Folks have never been in the historic engine house, Auburn's original fire station up Court Street. There is a fall open house being hosted by the new owners, and a number of both Auburn and regional small businesses will be there. That's this Saturday at 7:00 PM. There's flyers circulating Auburn Hall and elsewhere in the community. If folks want to have a chance to check that out and support local business. Next Tuesday, the 14th of November, at Central Maine Community College at 7:00 PM is the annual Pack the Gym Night, where the Auburn Police Department All-Stars will be taking on the Central Maine Community College men's basketball team. The PD is on a two-game winning streak right now. It's a very big deal. Hopefully, the chief will be off of IR, won't be out there on the court with his team. But all the proceeds benefit the Powell Center. It's always a fun time. So if folks can make it in their schedule, I'd encourage you guys to do that. While it won't come up while I'm still mayor, I do want to bring up and comment to something that Manager Creighton said with respect to development corporations. The ABDC issue, the Auburn Business Development Corporation issue with this industrial park, I truly believe it was a mythical, if you build it, they will come. It was sold to a council in an era where the council was writing blank checks to alphabet soup agencies. I'm proud of this council for holding the line and bringing some sanity to the open-ended nature of that agreement, including some cost shifting that occurred. But where I want to disagree with the manager is, the city of Auburn, the Auburn City Council does not need the Auburn Business Development Corporation to do economic development. In fact, the city has invested significantly in place-based development and downtown development. We're moving in the right direction there. And when we've talked to experts in real estate development about the new Auburn master plan, their recommendation was that the city create its own development corporation. You can still use the tools of development corporation without having to negotiate with a board of 25 people that you have no influence over. And a perfect example of that is what our sister city has done. While Lewiston Development Corporation exists, there's a very specific reason Lewiston created its own development corporation to do the Bates Mill project and other projects. So I urge whoever may remain on this council and future councils or counselors that may be watching, don't feel beholden to the Auburn Business Development Corporation. You can be much more nimble creating a city-based development corporation to do the work you have to do. And this will offend some folks that are watching, but I've watched the city spend millions of dollars of taxpayer money for no return. On a lighter note, I want to thank in advance Sue and her team and all the other Auburn staff and election ward folks that are going to be out there tomorrow. I fully expect, given the nature of some of the items on the ballot, will be a very busy day, and perhaps at times an emotional day. But I want to thank you guys in advance for what you're going to do. And I'm very proud that this council has moved quickly through our agenda so folks can get home and get a good night's rest. And last but not least, there is a very nice young man sitting behind the wall who helps with the production for these meetings. It's a very special day in his life, so I want to wish Brian a happy birthday. And with that, I'll, I had hinted that I might get everyone to sing, and he said he would go to commercial break. So we will not do that, but happy birthday, Brian. So David.
For the good of the audience, probably.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great Falls TV had our meeting. There were two voting members from Auburn and one non-voting staff. We were briefed the fact that we are about to lose our low-end channels, seven, 11, and 22. They will be replaced with 1301, 1302, and 1303, I believe, which are already there. Doesn't seem to be anything we're able to do anything about. It's just the way Spectrum is handling it with all the people that they have. There will be some advertisement about it. The subscribers will be notified. You'll still be able to see us. It's just a little bit in the higher numbers. As you well know, Great Falls TV is a joint effort between Lewiston and Auburn. And Lewiston has more subscribers than Auburn, and it's divided, 40% of what the franchise fee goes into the account. Lewiston pays more because they have more subscribers to be served. Recent meeting that we had, you know that Phil Neto is retired over in Lewiston, and Dennis Dute has taken his spot. And Dennis said at the last meeting that either he, I didn't understand whether he didn't have the skill set, or he didn't want to do the filming on the Lewiston side, and he thought, he asked the committee, which we don't have any authority of that, so I turned this back to the staff to investigate whether we can use funds from the, through the, to pay Lewiston staff people to film their end of it. So I asked the city manager to investigate that. I myself am opposed to it. I don't think that that's, you know, right, but I'll look for additional information. Let's look at the joint agreement and see what we agreed upon of that. Now, a little bit on the lighter side, I gave you all a write-up of Lottie lost her purse in Lewiston. And I won't go into the details of that, but I did play a role helping her to get her purse back. And I was very, very, I don't say surprised, but very appreciative of the fine work the Auburn PD did. It was within minutes. They found her, she returned home, and we got her purse back. If you want to look for more details, look at the online, the packet. And I spelled it out, and even have a picture of the two of them. Thank you very much. That's my report.
I was out of town with my family Wednesday, Thursday, Friday last week, and there was a school committee meeting last week, and I was really, I didn't, I was really conflicted about going out of town because there was an important issue on the agenda with regard to early release for middle school and high school students, to allow for professional development of the teachers at those schools. As most of you probably are aware, and as I've addressed in the past, the elementary schools in Auburn have weekly early releases on Wednesdays at 11:30 AM, half-day Wednesdays. Anybody who's raised a kid here in the last 20 years knows that. And so there was a committee assembled after this came up for a vote and was tabled back in April, I believe. It was tabled by the school committee to, so that there would be a working group that would really look at the different options because we did hear from parents who had significant concerns about expanding half-day Wednesdays, if you would, just for simple terms, to the middle school and the high school students. So there was a group composed of teachers, administrators, and parents, some of the stakeholders that really examined the issue and brought forth some recommendations in my absence on Wednesday of last week. And while I was away, I was happy to wake up in the morning and to take a look at the Sun Journal electronically and to see that the issue had been tabled to the upcoming date of the next school committee meeting on November 15th from 7:00 to 10:00. So there were a lot of parents, as I read the article, that came out and spoke against it, raised concerns, and some members of the school committee did as well, or at least thought that there should be some more time before a vote was taken. So that is coming up on the next school committee meeting agenda on November 15th from 7:00 to 10:00. If it's an issue of concern to you, if you've got children anywhere in the schools, whether they're in elementary school, someday they're hopefully going to be in middle school or high school in our community, so it has the potential to affect your lives in the future, come out and hear what has been proposed by the committee that was formed to look at the issue. And if you have any specific thoughts as a city counselor that you would like for me to take with me going into that meeting, please feel free to reach out. I do think it's an important issue that could have some broader implications for the community. Obviously, I'm just one person sitting up here on the school committee, working on the issues that are before us, but I would be interested to hear from any of you if you do have any input on that and to bring that back to the council, I mean, back to the school committee. I know they're all tired of hearing my opinion on it at this point. So I do hope to be more of a listener to what people have to say that night and to cast my vote with any input that any of my fellow city counselors or the mayor may have specifically on the issue. Also, on a similar note, I know that we all went through the storm last week. I had a similar experience as Counselor Young, and I wasn't going to bring it up, but since he brought his up, I'll chime in. I was driving with my family through Young's Corner last Tuesday on a rush home so that we can get home to get changed and do some trick-or-treating. And in the dusk, or I should say maybe the twilight, there was fire dripping from one of the utility poles, just literally dripping into the grass that grows there along the side of the road by the horse farm that's by Young Corner Road. Now, obviously, there was a tragic fire where there was a total loss of a house just right up the street from there. So I immediately called 911, and I was just amazed at how, you know, just how quickly, it took 20 seconds to tell them where the problem was, to give them the information that they needed, and it was just, okay, we'll have somebody out there right away. And we went home, got changed, and then came back in town on the same road. And it was like, you could see that there was sand on the ground, and there was just no issue anymore, you know, it had been resolved. And so it was nice to see that things get taken care of really quickly when there is a real emergency and when these crews that are working in a storm condition where there's a lot of different people pulling in them in different directions, that they're able to prioritize and take care of problems before they become bigger. And I know that we probably all can recall the dramatic photos that were taken out by the airport of pavement being melted by extremely high temperatures that were a result of perhaps something somewhat similar. So that's what was going through my mind when I called 911. It's, I'm glad that we put resources into that system. I know that we did have some bickering over what we ought to dedicate, but I'm glad to see that for me in that instant and for the people that live in Ward One in that area, that, you know, it didn't result in a larger problem and that it was able to be taken care of so effectively and expeditiously. So thank you to our first responders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things for me to report. One of them is on my appointment being on the sewer and water board. Couple of things. One, we're heading into budget season, and November's meeting for the water department is going to be for the 15th of November due to the holiday. The sewer department will meet at their regular time, which is the 21st. And then there's several other meetings coming up for budget review. We have a workshop on December 5th. And then the public hearing is going to be on the 20th of December for the And then the public hearing is going to be on the 20th of December for the budget and public hearing for both water and sewer. On another note, it turns out that the water and sewer department have purchased a building at the corner of Goff Street and South Street, so you'll be seeing some activity there, and the building will be taken down and will be a parking lot. So we'll be looking for that. As far as my other boards, I just wanted to go over, we finally... We did vote... The budget committee voted for the budget for this year for the county. The commissioners are not blinded by this budget, but we think they're going to take out of recommendations. We started out with a 5.6... 7.9% tax levy increase, and we ended up with a 5.56% levy increase. So around $20,000 was all we could seem to muster as a budget committee. Most of that money that was spent extra this year was on the jail and in support of prisoners. They just needed... They felt they needed to catch up on a lot of things that they hadn't spent in the past. And speaking with the county administrator, Larry Post, he says that he thinks that now they're at the point where they can level off their budgets going forward, so let's hope that that is true. But I did want to also make a note that in terms of what it actually, in real dollars, costs the city, it's actually went down. There must have been a shift in valuations in other communities because everybody knows it's a percentage of your valuation, and Lewiston, Auburn both share a little over 50% of the burden for the county. But it all changes from year to year, and I just wanted to note that in 2016, our increase was $200,000. Last year, our increase was $129,000, and this year, our increase is $97,000. So even though the levy went up, which we still got to fight, as it turns out, because of the mix of property values, we seem to be getting a little bit of a deal. So that's kind of a good thing, although I'd still like to see the budgets under... more under control. Many of the departments were flat-lined or slight increases, so it really was the support of prisoners and the jail and the sheriff's department that actually added most of the increases. I did also want to note that if you have a chance, you want to go visit the new communication center that they've set up over there. Last year's budget paid $108,000 or $9,000 to improve their communication department, the dispatch. And they've done a very good job, and it looks very impressive, to the point where I think that at some point, we might be, you know, asking them knocking on their door again, which we've done many times. But just take a look at it. It's rather a good operation there. They've also bought in on the tower as part of this year's budget. $50,000 is going towards a share of the new tower going up, so they have increased communications for themselves as well as supporting the project. So at least that part of the 911 expansion is being supported partially by that project. So, and that'll be for, I think, five years or something. $50,000 a year will be dedicated to that, but... So beyond that, Mr. Mayor, I'm all set.
Four things. First, I wanted to echo the mayor's encouragement of people to attend the Fall Open House on November 11th at 7:00 p.m. at the Engine House. It's a great facility. It's an awesome opportunity to see the things that are going on in there. Second, I had the pleasure of attending and being a judge in the costume contest for the Fright Festival. I also had the great opportunity to tag-team in on the popcorn machine. They had far more people than they thought would attend, and it was great to see all the kids out there and the wonderful job that the folks in the rec. department do. Third, after the storm, I had a chance to go to the High Street Congregational Church to see how the food pantry runs, and it's an amazing volunteer operation led by Lee Upton. They do some great work, and it shows us that, you know, while we were all affected by the loss of electricity and that outcome from the storm, there were people who lost large amounts of their food that they purchased, and, you know, for some people, that's destabilizing, and it's great to have something like the food pantry here. Fourth is vote tomorrow.
Thank you. I'd like to just bring a little attention to our hunters that we have in the neighborhoods of Auburn. We've got people that own lots of acres out in the south part of Auburn, especially in the north part of Auburn. And what's happening is people don't know where the boundaries are, and some people don't respect the signs that may hang on the trees that says, "Please don't hunt on our property." Now, this goes back a little bit now for, you know, just a few weeks ago, we had a young lady that was killed on her own property. And what's happening, people are afraid to go out during hunting season, especially when the rifles are being fired off a few hundred feet from their home. So please respect the people that own their land. If it says not to hunt, please do not go out there and hunt. And the other thing is, don't pull that trigger until you know who that bullet is going to strike. And that's about all we can ask of you, I guess, but please, stay off lands you don't belong on, don't give people a bad time, and it will make the rest of us hunters look like we're very important to be out there instead of making people ugly about what we do when we're out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you are watching this at home or if you're here tonight, you are almost certainly a voter. It's been said, but please, tomorrow is Election Day. Please take the time to go out and vote. Our polls are open from 7:00 to 8:00, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Ward 1 is at Washburn School. Ward 2 is at AMS. Ward 3 is at Fairview. Ward 4 is here at Auburn Hall, and Ward 5 is at Sherwood Heights. Please, the lines are never long because our election workers are top-notch, so please, again, take the time, whether it's before work, during your lunch break, or after work, whenever you can, please go vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items. One is, I'm asking for some direction in terms of memorandum of understanding that the city has with St. Mary's Nutrition Center from St. Mary's Regional Medical Center for a community garden, which is at Newbury Street Garden. And I have this MOU, which I'm prepared to sign, but I want to make sure that the council is supportive of it because I know there has been some discussion about that. We could do that as a workshop if you'd like. I also want to put out a reminder to citizens that there will be an Ag Study organizational meeting that will be held on the 16th of this month at 6:00 p.m. in the community room. This is a very important initiative by the city. The mayor has appointed a committee, and the consultant will be present, and I'm looking forward to the discussion. I think this is a... This is going to be a great opportunity for the city of Auburn. I also want to make a reminder for people of the workshop that will be held next Monday on the 13th on the Barker Mill Dam and the little Andersgård and Watershed plans. This is important. This is... Will provide a good overview of what has been happening with the lower Barker Dam and the process and the experience of national stakeholders at other facilities, and I appreciate the involvement, the mayor, and his support of this as well as the council. And I would like to echo the comment made earlier about the election effort that's being made by the staff led by our city clerk. This is always a challenge, a lot of activities surrounding the election. And also like to thank the city staff who were involved with the storm effort. That storm was, I think, a surprise to many of us in terms of the impact that it had. Specifically, I'd like to thank the police department, Fire Department, Public Services, 911, and all the other city staff who were involved. Thank you.
Finance report.
I would... Before I do the finance report, I would like to just give you an update on the bond issue. We... I was authorized to bond $9.5 million for the capital improvement program, which was 7.4 for FY '18 and 2.1 from FY '17. We went out to bid. We got... We received eight bids. The winning bid, the interest rate for that bond issue is 1.809. We received a premium on the bond of $1.25 million, which we went back to the bidder, asked them to resize the bond rather than have extra $1.2 million hanging around. We reduced the amount that we bonded to $8.5 million, and with the premium, we still have enough to do all of the projects, but it saves the city $100,000 a year plus interest for the next 10 years, so it's over $1 million. And with that premium also pays for the cost of issuance on those bonds. And then there's enough left over to pay the interest that's due in March of this year. So that was... I wanted to share that good news with you. Also, our ratings, we were rated, again, by Standard and Poor's and Moody's, which we are every year. Standard and Poor's kept us at a double-A minus, which we have been for the last five years. And a couple of years ago, Moody's had added a negative outlook to our double-A3 bond because of the issue we had with our fund balance. With the efforts that have been done by the council and staff as we work together to correct that, they removed the negative outlook this year, so...
Good. Yeah.
As far as the finance report, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail if... Because I'll have the October 1 next council meeting, so this one is the end of September since I was gone in October on vacation, so it's... But if anybody has questions, I would try to answer them for you.
Questions? I would entertain a motion to accept the report and place it on file. So moved.
Second.
Motion by councillor Burns, second by councillor Walker. Those in favor? opposed, carry 601. We're at the final open session of the evening. Mayor recognizes the police chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I just wanted to give you an update. We did get our tallies from our drug take-back, as you were talking about the opioid law that we're looking to... Lawsuit that we're looking to get into. I just want to give you an update on what took place with the collection. So Maine, again, had the largest collection within all New England states. We had 41,700 pounds that were collected, and the drug take-back, this is the largest collection. For Maine, we actually have the largest collection per capita in the United States. 129 agencies participated. I really want to thank the citizens of Auburn because we ended up collecting the third-highest amount of drugs within the state of Maine of those 129 agencies. So we collected 1,112 pounds. Stakeholder for us on this project, obviously, is Healthi Andersgård. They're a great supporter for this program. And then also the United States Drug Enforcement Agency, DEA, they participate. And Bedard Pharmacy is our local stakeholder, providing us a location to be able to do the drug take-back. We had officers there. We also had our cadets participate in assisting citizens with that. So I want to thank the citizens for participating. We know through surveys that we... Studies, rather, that we collect that most people who begin that drug addiction, they start... Their first drug is actually something that they took out of someone's medicine cabinet. So if we can discard that drugs, those drugs, it certainly puts us in a better place, helps us deal with this issue. And because we know, as councillor Burns said, every family is being impacted by this. So we were only beat out by Maine CDC. They had 13,000 pounds. And Cumberland County also had the second highest, and they also did their drug take-back on two days, and so they got a great turnout there. I want to remind citizens, though, you don't have to wait for the drug take-back day. We have a collection unit right in our lobby, so you can come in anytime. The lobby's open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We can discard your drugs at any time. Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
Awesome.
Are still citizens wishing to speak? Be quick.
My name's Peter Rubens. I'm with GrowLA, and we're working on the history trail here in Lewiston and Auburn. I just want to thank the council for approving the funds for the history trail. And just a quick thought about it is that Lewiston, Auburn are really working together on putting together a comprehensive history trail that will start at West Pitch and then circumnavigate the Great River, the falls, and over into Lewiston and onto Veterans Park. So this is something that will draw people to Lewiston, Auburn, and we're hoping that it could be a main attraction, very similar to Strawberry Bank down in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. And we're hoping that we can advertise this out on the main turnpike by putting it as an attraction at the Auburn exit and Lewiston exit. So Museum LA and the history trail or history district, historic district, should be advertised out there, so hopefully we can do that and work together on this. And again, thank you, and I think we're shooting for having it up and running by this summer as early as possible, so thank you.
Thanks for your doing. Councillor Walker?
Yes, I meant to, in the report, I meant to say that I wanted to thank the chief and all of his helpers for the Halloween, the safe Halloween that we held in the New Auburn area. The total number of people that were involved in that, and we try our best to keep track of the numbers, with the parents and the children, we went to about 860 people that participated in walking the streets in the New Auburn area. And I wanted to thank the chief because he made sure that he had his cadet workers down there, and he had a couple of other officers that were involved in the whole event that we did for the two hours. And the event really goes four hours, but the two hours that we were in the street, crossing the streets, it was one beautiful day, and everyone had come out for that. And again, without their support and their help, meaning the city of Auburn and everyone that gives the orders to do this, without their support, we wouldn't be able to do this because there are people everywhere is downtown, and it just went great. It was a great day for all of us. Thank you, Chief.
On that positive note, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved. Second. Motion seconded. Those in favor? Adjourned.